I'm lucky to be with Leadership Loudoun County.
There you go. That accounts for the big crowd tonight. We will have to get the clock set sometime, though. Not right now. You don't have to get in the middle of everything. Do you know what she said? Five fifty-nine.
You're right on the money.
You're bossy, too. You're bossy, too, right, Aaron?
It'll be six o'clock by the time you maneuver to it.
He's the only one in here that can reach him.
We're gonna watch him at six o'clock right now. We're gonna watch him try and hit that nailhead again.
Try not to say it.
He's reached up.
Lot of pressure right here. Can he do it?
Well, Tammy, he's the only one in the room that could have reached that nailhead.
Just sign the documents, we'll get your paycheck tomorrow.
Okay, at six o'clock.
I'll quit if he comes running. I'll change places.
You ready, Erin?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna call the Loudoun County Commission meeting to order for October 6, 2025. Before I bring Jim Jenkins up here, I'd like to recognize we have Leadership Loudoun with us tonight. We're happy to have you here. And don't just discourage watching the meeting.
I picked the easy one.
Okay. Jim Jenkins, come up and tell us about District Three.
This is a resolution amending the Zeller map of Loudoun County, Tennessee, pursuant to Chapter Seven, thirteen dash seven dash one by the Tennessee Code Annotated, to resume from A two lower residential district to A three developing agricultural district. Loudoun County Tax Map Twenty-seven, parcel eighty-one located at two-two-zero-two Old Greenback Road, Loudoun County, Tennessee, situated in Southern Legislative District. This was not recommended for approval by the Planning Commission.
Got it.
It was unanimously denied. It's in the third district with absence of Commissioner Satterfield. I'll handle that when we get that knowledge in.
Fair enough. He'll be back up here in a few minutes. Okay, I've asked Commissioner James to open the meeting with a pledge and a prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, we come before you tonight, and ask your blessings on our lives. As we've seen in the past few days, evil is trying to take over our country, and we can use all the help we can from you to help fight it. I just pray that people start seeing the evil for what it is, and start doing something about it. It's gonna destroy this great country, and we don't want it to. So I ask you to bless our country, our troops, our first responders, and keep them safe and help them do your will. It's your name we ask. Amen.
Amen.
Tammy, call roll.
Randolph.
Here.
James.
Here.
Jenkins. Quillen.
Here.
Satterfield. Whitfield. Cullen.
Here.
Morrison.
Here.
Shaver.
Here. Just at that point, did Gary tell you where he went? Gary's mother, Commissioner Satterfield's mother-in-law just passed away just minutes ago at his home. She was living in their home right here at the end of her life, so.
Whitfield.
Whitfield. What did I say? No, Whitfield's mother-in-law. So, of course, he has to go by all means.
Just keep doing your prayers.
Okay, we have six. We just made the quorum. Okay, next up is the adoption of the October 6, 2025 commission agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agenda as it's written. Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Commissioner Randolph. Any comments? Did I miss it?
James.
James.
I'm sorry, Chief.
They look so much alike now.
Yeah, they got suits on.
No, I got a little more hair now. Why? Something about the suits?
Okay. Sorry, Chief. Never, ever disrespect the man with the four cross bugles. Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Commissioner James to adopt the agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up is the reading and acceptance of the September 2, 2025 Loudoun County Commission minutes.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes that we all received ahead of time and have plenty of opportunity to read through.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Quillen. We have a motion by Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Commissioner Quillen to accept the minutes from the September 2, 2025 Loudoun County Commission meeting. Any further comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next up is general public comments. First up is Rich Englund.
Question for the Commission. In the meeting minutes, is it unusual now or usual now to not include what people say at the public comments?
We never put them on.
I wasn't included in it, even though I was denied to order speak. And it doesn't have Adam Wallace die a trial at the end of the meeting on the same subject that I tried to talk about. Why not?
What did Adam talk about?
In the last meeting, I tried to talk about the landfill, and Henry shut me down.
Wasn't on the agenda.
Right. And then at the end of that same meeting, Adam Wallace, the floor approved.
I'm only responsible to record what is voted on. It's all I'm responsible to record.
Okay.
Minutes include the actions of the meeting, not what was said at the meeting.
I'm sorry, Dan, what'd you say?
Just the actions. And what was voted on. It's what I'm responsible to record. Not every word everybody says. I couldn't do that. There's no way possible.
And I thought the meeting adjourned when Adam made his comments.
I don't remember.
No, it adjourned afterwards, according to the video.
Blake Moore.
Good evening. My name is Blake Moore, and I'm a Loudoun County resident. Well, that's loud. Or maybe it's just me. I want to thank the Commission Chair for the opportunity to speak on a topic on the agenda tonight regarding possible changes to the allowance of public comments during Loudoun County Commission workshops. I feel it is important that this consideration be given a full review, possibly even by the Governmental Affairs Committee, as it is by definition responsible for formulating policy recommendations pertaining to the administration and operating procedures within Loudoun County government. As part of the comprehensive review, the committee should also ensure that speakers have a reasonable amount of time to present a compelling and fact-based presentation on topics germane to this governing body. State Representative Elaine Davis is already sponsoring legislation at the state level that will expand public comment rules for all local government meetings, and is proposing that comment is allowed for issues germane to that governing body and not just specific to the agenda items. I respectfully ask that if changes are considered to public comments, that they fall more in line with what is being championed at the state government level by Representative Davis, and that this commission provide a full written proposal in a public forum that is approved by not just this commission, but also by appropriate committees. I ask for the written proposal to be available to the public, as there are many instances where the workshop minutes and commission agenda items do not provide clarity and definition on topics discussed. If you would like to review Representative Davis's comments, they are noted in House Bill Twenty-two and states in part that a governing body shall, for each public meeting, reserve a period for public comment to provide the public with the opportunity to comment, one, on matters that are germane to the items on the agenda for the meeting, and two, on any matter that is germane to the jurisdiction of the governing body, regardless of whether such matter is an item on the agenda for the meetings. Even though the Constitution of the State of Tennessee, Article One, subsection twenty-three, states as follows, "That the citizens have a right, in a peaceable manner, to assemble together for their common good, to instruct their representatives, and to apply to those invested with the powers of government, for redress of grievances or other purposes by address or objection." There are public bodies, especially school boards, that do not allow public comment on general matters of department operation, and these are comments from Representative Davis. Once again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to address this body on this very important topic related to at least three of our First Amendment rights, which include freedom of speech, freedom of assembly, and freedom to petition. Thank you.
Pat Hunter.
My name is Pat Hunter, and I would like to comment on a couple of things. With regards to the boards and committees, I brought copies of the duties and responsibilities of the Governmental Affairs Committee. I was actually at one of the meetings back in 2004 when the rules, some of the rules were adopted and formulated. And those rules specifically detail what the duties are, which include promulgating and bringing forth recommendations with regards to your procedures. I brought copies for everyone to see. I'll be collecting them out. The other thing is, with regards to the boards and committees, very rarely do the committees meet. And this concerns me because I think at the time, we really don't know what these committees do. But they do have very important duties and responsibilities. The other thing is, I would like to comment about the resolution regarding public comments and workshops. You know, in 2015, there was a major change. For years, we had public comments on the agenda at the beginning and off the agenda at the end. And each comment period was allowed five minutes and was also separated. So, the commission knew about the business at hand first, and then at the very end, we were allowed to speak on other matters that were important to the community. We were able to voice our concerns, but back in 2015, those non and on and off were consolidated into one and then turned into five minutes. So we lost five minutes. What concerns me about this resolution is that, first of all, I again believe it should go back to the committee to carefully look at all the details. When I heard my commissioner talking about it, we certainly didn't hear about a TCA that's there that if someone is disruptive or says something in the meeting, that they could also be asked to leave. And if not, there's a criminal offense, a thirty-nine seventeen three oh six, which is disrupting a meeting, but it is a class A misdemeanor, which carries eleven months and twenty-nine days and a twenty-five hundred dollar fine. I would hope that that wouldn't happen, but it's in this. And we need to look at all of the fine details and the verbiage. And I'm hoping that since we have four members absent, that this will be tabled until it can go back to the correct committee. I know that this resolution mentions three minutes. We currently have five minutes. You can do it by majority vote. That turns it into a meeting that, or votes, an actionable item. And also, you would be required to have minutes. So I think there's some details that need to be addressed, and I'm gonna ask that you please table this until it goes back to the proper committee and all of these issues are properly vetted. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Jenkins.
The law may is the two-two-zero-two Old Greenback Road.
We'll dispense with the rereading of it, if that's all right. Mr. Chairman, on behalf of Commissioner Satterfield, I'll make a motion that we accept the Planning Commission's recommendation and deny this request.
We got a motion by Commissioner Shaver. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Quillen to uphold the disapproval by the Planning Commission. So voting yes is to uphold the disapproval. Voting no means you approve. Any further discussions? All in favor of upholding the Planning Commission's disapproval? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you all. Have a good day.
Buddy Bradshaw is not here tonight.
I make a motion to approve the mayor's recommendation on boards and committees.
They're only taking care of the expired terms.
Right.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Shaver. Do we have a second? Second. Seconded by Commissioner Morrison. Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Commissioner Morrison to approve the mayor's recommendations for those that are expiring on the boards and committees. Any further questions? Any comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner Shaver.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Contrary to what we've heard a little bit of, I will put this in the form of a motion. This resolution was written by Bob Bowman with all the proper investigation, according to him, that we're gonna go back and start opening public comment back up to workshops. As I said last month, or last workshop, when the new law came out, I think there was a little wish. I think we just have a better handle on it now, so I'm gonna put that in the form of a motion that we add the new resolution back to our workshop public comments.
Okay, do we have a second? Second. Seconded by Commissioner James. We got a motion by Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Commissioner James.
Could we amend it to five minutes?
We could do it at the night of if we want to.
Yep.
I mean, if somebody's got longer to go.
The resolution to five?
We can, if you want to.
I would like to.
Do it.
It's the chairman.
Make the motion in amendment.
Okay, I want to amend the motion and have the time allotment changed from three minutes to five minutes.
Okay, we have to vote on that first.
Right.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Commissioner James, amended by Commissioner Quillen to change the time limit from three to five minutes. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, change to five minutes. Now, the same motion by Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Commissioner James to allow public comments at the workshop with no restriction as to germane to the agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, my second item is the jail inmate population. And we have two highly distinguished visitors tonight that may have come on behalf of this. I don't know. But we discussed this.
One's looking around.
We discussed this at the last workshop, and I'll be real clear. I also got interviewed by the TV. I haven't seen it yet, but I never really care of those sort of things. It's terrible. It usually is. I don't like them. Anyhow, without going through all the numbers, one highlight tonight is, as of five minutes ago, we only had a total of one hundred and sixty-one in the jail. That's a plus. But at the August, and I think they probably have some more better updated numbers, at the August TCI report, we had ninety-five felons waiting to go to court in the Justice Center. That's a one-day snapshot as we described last time. What I'm gonna ask for tonight is, and just in a minute, if these gentlemen want to address this or want to say anything, this is not a finger pointing or that sort of stuff. I'm gonna ask that the mayor send a letter saying, here's what our concern is. Is there anything we can do on our end? Can we lobby the governor to say, we need some more help? We need some more judicial assistance. We need something. That's where I'm going with this. Again, I'm not pointing fingers. We may hear something about we had COVID and the courthouse burnt down, some stuff like that. I don't know if we're gonna hear about that or not. But that's all I'm looking for, is if we just send a letter to the criminal court saying, here's our concern. We opened up the new jail in 2019. We had this problem before the new jail. We've always had this issue. We took it up in 2015, and the judges came and spoke to us and that sort of stuff and hoped to improve it. I think it never did change, but then we had COVID, and then the courthouse did burn down. But we still got a lot of inmates waiting to go to big court. So my motion will be that we ask the mayor to send a very friendly letter to the court to ask them to, what can we, here's our concerns. Is there anything we can do to help? That would be my motion.
Do we have a second? Second. Okay, we had a second by Commissioner Morrison.
Mr. Chairman, right now, we're at this point, you all made the trip. Either one of y'all want to speak to any part of this?
Yeah, I'll let you.
Sure, we both can come up together.
Sure. Come on up.
Hold hands if y'all do.
No.
So I'm Russell Johnson, District Attorney General. I've been the District Attorney for the Ninth Judicial District since 2006. Included in that district is Loudoun, Roanoke, Morgan, and Mexico counties. We have our main office in Kingston. So we handle prosecution for all the criminal cases. And General Sessions Court, Criminal Court, and those four counties, Juvenile Court. We do child support enforcement, and we are in charge of the DPF and facilitate all the cases that are necessary to go to TBI. So your statement as to one sixty-one is correct. You were talking about being ninety-five before. It's ninety-nine actually today, but they're not all felons. Sixty-nine of them are felons. Thirty of them are charged with, or not felons yet, they're charged with felony charges. And the others are misdemeanors. So they, yes, are waiting to go to court. They could not, they could be waiting to go just merely to General Sessions Court. If you've ever been by the Justice Center on a Wednesday, that's what's going on in terms of General Sessions Court, the lower level, court entry level. If you're arrested, you first go to General Sessions Court, have to earn your way up to, after preliminary hearing, a waiver to grand jury, and then on Criminal Court in front of Judge Jeff Wicks. So it's highly possible that of the ninety-nine, not all of them are already in Criminal Court. I will tell you that eight of those individuals are felony playing gang members, a nationwide criminal gang. They're usually getting younger females in under their wings, so to speak, using drugs, money, and other things, and then stealing identifications, running scams, getting makeup, wigs, dressing those females up to look like individual females and driver's licenses, stolen photo IDs, and they go through the last lane, the fourth, third, fifth lane of the banks where the tellers can't see. And now, frankly, most of this is being done remotely. It's not even a person inside the bank. It's someone at a center somewhere monitoring digitally the camera. And they'll run the same people through multiple times a day to get money off of checks or other things based on stolen IDs. So eight felony playing gang members. Four of them are trained ARUVA, TDA, that we've been hearing about, the Venezuelan gang. These four individuals hit the Hills Federal Credit Union ATM for $66,000. Ended up, all four of them, being caught in Kansas. We kind of took the lead. Out of all the places in Tennessee that they hit, over $675,000 statewide from ATM, we brought them back. The only federal U.S. Attorney's Office that is interested in doing anything about it is in Omaha, Nebraska. So they're putting together all the TDA cases, and ours, the calls of the information to one of the females has given about the operation of the TDA, how they go about doing this. She's critical to the prosecution, so we're sending all four of those people back to, or over to Omaha, Nebraska. So those twelve people will be gone. A lot of them are in there. The most serious felonies are, when we have murder cases, attempted murder cases, invariably, even juvenile murder cases, like the one we got going on in Harriman with the party, where the individuals were actually from Loudoun County. Invariably, there's gonna be a mental health assessment. That can take months, sometimes even longer. That's one of the holdups. We have one case that Commissioner Shaver and I were talking about. It's the Miles case. The brother, that's our key witness, is serving in the military over the middle of the year. We brought him back months before. It's hard to get somebody that's active duty military overseas to get him back over here, and then he gets here and it gets continued for whatever reason. We don't wanna try to do that every time. We wanna make sure we're going to court. A lot of them, you know, the one on Glendale, three twenty-one, the former vet, Vidrum, that killed his, the people he was staying with. You know, cases like that are time-consuming. You got higher-profile defense attorneys that are pulling out all the stops. So there's a number of reasons why a lot of these individuals, ninety-nine sounds like a big number. The good thing is, there's only a hundred and sixty-one there out of the two seventy-five. As the sheriff would point out to you, there's twenty-one TDOC inmates that have TDOC sentences that TDOC hasn't picked up yet, but they're paying you $41 a day to keep them.
Paying $41 a day so far on those, since January, we made $153,000 on those inmates.
So with the number of beds you have, you'll take those people all day long?
Take them all day long, yeah. They have a medical issues or expenses are higher on medical. We try to get those out the door as soon as we can. But they take the highest level of crimes first. So if it's a murder or something like that, they'll take those defendants first.
We've got five people here on transport, like the Runyon girl that shot and killed a four-year-old in Rockwood. We can't have her in the Roanoke County Jail. Y'all have her here. You'll take people from Blount County, Roanoke County, whatever, and then you have to send people. At times up there, it's kind of a trade-off. That type of thing usually evens out. So a number of reasons that people will be over there in jail. But, you know, for all of you, there are ninety-five counties in the state of Tennessee, thirty-two judicial districts, not, no rhyme or reason geographically, population-wise. We've got four counties. We've got about one hundred and sixty-seven thousand people. Knox County's a single county district. Blount County's a single county district. Anderson County's a single county district. Blount County has two Criminal Court judges and only one county to worry about. Anderson County, same thing. Two Criminal Court judges, only one county to worry about. But they have three courtrooms. We only have one courtroom. With one judge, one courtroom, four counties, we have to follow Judge Wicks around the district. So we're only here three times a year. Roanoke County three times a year, but we're here, you know, several weeks at a time, more often here than other places. But that just gives you a little bit of a sense of where we are and why people are here. To your point about the letter, Judge Wicks is now the presiding judge between Judge Wicks Criminal Court, Mike Pemberton Circuit Court, Tom McFarland Chancery Court. They share that. They pass that around every year. So September first, next year will be Tom McFarland, Judge Pemberton. Judge Wicks is in the best position to receive that letter. That would be very beneficial to him because we've been talking for several months about him saying, hey, Judge Pemberton, we all three have concurrent jurisdiction. You need to give me some help. Judge Wicks disposes of about twenty-two hundred cases per year. Chancellor McFarland disposes of about eleven hundred cases per year. For those of you from other states who aren't familiar, Chancellor is an old, archaic judge-type court. It's a court of equity. It's a civil court. They don't do jury trials in Chancery Court, and they don't do criminal cases. But because the state has given them concurrent jurisdiction, Tom McFarland, the chancellor, could take on some of the Criminal Court cases. Judge Pemberton only has about three hundred cases disposed of each year. Now granted, you know, a public intoxication case could count as one of those cases for Criminal Court, but then he might have a three-day-long contracts case or something. So they're never apples-to-oranges comparison, but those numbers, when you look at them, one judge with twenty-two hundred, one with eleven hundred, one with three hundred and ninety or eighty, or whatever it was last year, there's a lot of disparity there. At one point, Judge Pemberton was going around to other counties and filling in because of his lighter caseload. For Anderson County, when they had a judge on military leave, and then one had some medical issues, he was over in the Cobble and Putnam County District at one time, too. So that, a little overview of how the system works, what he has done, he's taken over the drug court, the state mental health and substance abuse, runs a drug court on the Morgan County Correctional footprint, using TDOC inmates in the drug court instead of in prison. And so he's up there two days a month and carries on regular dock up there. So that's some of his load as well. that's some of his load as well. But he doesn't get credit for that in his case count. So, so what, we talked about various ways, maybe let Judge Pemberton handle all the DUI cases in the Criminal Court system, maybe he take on Meeks County, and, and that way we can have more days elsewhere. It's going to spread us a little more thin and the public defender a little more thin, but I, I think your, your idea is, if the time is ripe for that, it would be really helpful. I've already communicated all this to Judge Wicks today, and I think it will be helpful.
Buddy Bradshaw is a very good wordsmith for this sort of stuff. Of course, he's on fall break with us, but if this passes our bodies tonight, he will get something together that will sound appropriate and be what we're looking for, I think.
Right.
Just as long, as far as the jail goes, you know, we've got about 270 beds, we're running 150, 155 is right now. So, we have been up earlier in the summer up to 200 inmates, so it's kind of, it's kind of fluctuating a lot here lately. So, usually winter times are a little bit slower, so I say we'll stay around 150 to under 200 the rest of the year. And last month at the, yeah, last month at the workshop, that was one of the things I had discussed also, we were running 130, 150, staying pretty red. Well, all of a sudden, man, it just was over 200 for a little while there. We had to adjust our ADP, our average daily population from medical. Oh, yes. Medical, if you, if you run over that average, medical could really start sticking it to you about how many they have to deal with every day, so we had to, to up that with our contracts. I, I'm real pleased, I'm real pleased to hear this from our District Attorney and from Sheriff Bow, and I, like I said on the front, this was never about pointing fingers. This was about, what can we do? If a, if a gentle letter is, is something that can be beneficial, I think that's well within our budget.
Right. One of the things that might continue to adversely affect us in the short term, I know you like to keep those 21, and would probably like to have more, but because of the surge, the law enforcement surge going on in Memphis Shelby County, TDOC is kind of not bringing the best by local right now. They're holding those bed spaces to be able to take people out of the Memphis Shelby County Jail and the TDOC custody, to give them some relief, to help that situation look a little better down there. So, it may cause you to, that 21.
Yeah, Sheriff, Sheriff Saunders, about over 500 employees short, adjusting corrections.
Wow, right. So, Memphis is driving a lot of what's going on in the criminal justice system, and it doesn't necessarily affect some of the center, but it may cause some sort of, but you've got plenty of capacity, it sounds like.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we're going to keep the run the same, same number, whether it's 200 inmates, 230 inmates. We still run the same staff, the lights are still the same, food will be food, laundry, detergent, things of that nature. We're feeding each inmate, it's about $6 a day per inmate for their daily, daily food, so it's not that much more expensive, so let's keep more of that. Excellent.
So, we think we need another judge? I mean, is that our ultimate goal? Is that what would help?
Assistance from other judges, I guess.
Right, I think right now, what we're, we're saying, I think, is already on Judge Wicks's mind, and I think your letter can certainly back that up. Because it's hard to go to, you know, two other judges that are on the same level with, but say, hey, I'm going to make you start taking more cases. Next September 1st, Tom McFarland comes up, he's saying, hey, we're going back to the way it was, you know? So, you've got to be real diplomatic about that, the way it's handled, and this would prove helpful to him, I think is what I'm saying, so, yeah.
Call a vote, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
Russ and Jimmy, thank you. That was very informative. Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Commissioner Morrison, to have the mayor send a letter to address the overpopulation in the jail. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Letter's on its way. Dan, you're done?
I'm done.
Okay. Aaron, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Letter A is consideration of request to purchase a vehicle for maintenance from County General.
You want me to handle it? This was Gary Whitfield's item, and as you know, he had to leave. At the workshop, we had discussed the potential of, we're looking at a used truck, and I don't know if they really kind of knew exactly where they were going, so they had a meeting with maintenance and Mr. Montuz and Buddy and Gary, and because of what they're wanting to do and had some, just some things we want to do, they don't want to buy the used truck anymore, they want to buy a new truck. So, the dollar amount that was mentioned at the workshop needs to be amended to reflect 60,500, is that correct?
Correct.
And that gets a new truck with toolbox, ladder racks, everything on it, and that puts them in the position they need to be rather than a 10 or 11-year-old truck with 150,000 miles on it. So, I'll put that in the form of a motion for Commissioner Whitfield.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Shaver to purchase a new truck for maintenance?
Second.
Seconded by?
Randolph.
Mr. Randolph?
One don't have no hair.
Be nice.
He did it himself. Let's, let's just go ahead and tell what it is. He got carried away, his barber was gone out of town, so he, I can tell myself. What'd your son tell you?
He said, it looks awful, Daddy.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
We got a motion by Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Commissioner Randolph, purchase a new truck with the $260,500. You going on the state contract?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying, oh, no, it's a roll call, money.
By the way, before, before you call that roll, I forgot Mr. Kleinschmidt come back here, just in case anybody had a question for Mr. Kleinschmidt, right? Got any, got any questions, Mr. Kleinschmidt? Call roll.
James?
Yes.
Quillen?
Aye.
Morrison?
Yes.
Shaver?
Yep.
Randolph?
Yes.
Motion carries. They get a new truck.
Why are you still here, Jim?
It was Randolph.
Go, man, go. Go, Matt, go.
All right. Okay. Letter B is consideration of recommendation to approve or accept the following grants, TDOT Transportation Safety Grant up to $250,000 for the Highway Department with a 10% matching funds. There's a resolution to sign on this one.
And the Highway Department's paying the match?
Correct.
Make mostly approval, Mr. Chairman.
Is this the one where we do the surveys, the?
Basically, they're going to go out and look at all of our roads and tell us what they are, yeah, it's kind of a, yeah.
Second.
We got a motion by Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Commissioner Quillen, for the Transportation Safety Grant up to $250,000 for the Highway Department with a 10% match. Any further conversation? Call roll, Tammy.
Quillen? Aye. Morrison?
Yes.
Shaver?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Letter C is consideration of recommendation to approve amendments or line adjustments in the following funds.
May we?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion with approves C, 1 through 7, discussed at the workshop, paperwork in our hands prior to this.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner James. Okay, we got a motion on the floor to approve the amendments in County General Fund all the way through to Capital Project 7. Motion's made by Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Commissioner James. Any further discussion? Call roll, Tammy.
Colin?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Shaver?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jenkins? Not here. Quillen?
Aye.
I didn't hear any notes. Motion carries.
Letter D is distribution of the following reports, the approved budget meeting minutes from August 18th, and summary financial reports for September. These items were included in your packet that Ms. Walker sent out and posted online. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Van Shaver.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we approve the, the requested bonds and notaries.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Shaver. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Quillen to approve the bonds and notaries. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's it.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we adjourn, let everybody go home.
Second.
We got a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Commissioner Randolph. We'll consider this meeting adjourned.
Matt, you can go home, man. Yeah, man. Has anybody, all tried yet?
Good, there you go.
Are we going to all have separate? What we want to add?